Good evening. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Do we have a closed session report? Nothing to report. Okay. City manager, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Let in your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littster?
Here.
Councilmember Luvenos?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kavanagh?
Here.
And Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
We welcome you to the Simi Valley City Council meeting. With most of Simi Valley businesses open for business, we encourage Simi Valley residents to shop local and eat local to support Simi Valley businesses as much as possible. While you're out and about, we also remind everyone to wear their masks, use hand sanitizer, and wash their hands often. Simi Valley, like other Ventura County cities, are holding our meetings without the public in attendance. However, there are still opportunities for the public to participate in this council meeting. The public statements are received via Zoom. As noted on the agenda, the public was encouraged to register no later than 3:30 PM today if they wished to speak via Zoom. Written comments are also accepted by email. Those emails have already been provided to the city council. They will be made part of the record, but will not be read by the city clerk this evening.
The city thanks you for your patience. During this local emergency, the city continues to provide opportunities for the public to participate in the business of the city and for their voices to be heard. With that said, we can move on with the tonight's meeting. Agenda review. Any comments on the agenda? Any council member?
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
I'll second. Vote yes for me, please.
Okay, motion second, calling for the vote.
Vote yes for me, please.
Thank you.
Please vote yes for me also.
Thank you. Yeah. The motion passes unanimously.
If any member... Excuse me, if any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Anybody have a conflict? Hearing none, we'll move forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, an honorary resolution recognizing Black History Month. And Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. This evening, we are recognizing Black History Month, and I will read the present the resolution. Whereas the celebration of Black history can be traced back to 1926, when writer and scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the father of Black history, began the annual observance each February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln to recognize the contributions of Black Americans in the nation's history. And whereas in 1976, February was proclaimed by President Gerald Ford as Black History Month to recognize the important contributions made to our nation's life and culture by Black citizens. And whereas we proclaim Black History Month to honor and affirm the importance of the contributions of Black Americans, individuals who took a stand against prejudice and advanced the cause of civil rights. And whereas the Simi Valley City Council recognizes that Black Americans have endured egregious discrimination and bigotry throughout our nation's history, and yet, we enjoy the positive impact of their economic, cultural, spiritual, and political contributions to our community. And whereas Black History Month serves as a reminder to continue the fight for justice and equality for all, combat racism, and continue to build a more diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community. And whereas, Black History Month is a prompt to the citizens of Simi Valley to reflect on the sacrifices and contributions made by generations of African Americans and continue the nation's march toward a day when every person knows the unalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and to build a better and brighter future. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Simi Valley does hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of Simi Valley to celebrate the rich contributions that Black Americans have made to our society.
Thank you. Comments from the council? Let's start with you, Elaine, if you'd like.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful resolution, and I'm grateful that we are celebrating this month. We have a very rich cultural heritage here in our city. And having visited Ghana twice in my life and know some of the Black history that comes from that part of the world and how it contributes to our country, there's much we can learn, much that we need to be aware of and much we can celebrate. So thank you for this resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Luvenos.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm very glad that we are doing this resolution. It's a good start, but we have a lot of work to do. I'm very proud that just a few short months ago, we had our first ever Black Lives Matter March here in the city of Simi Valley, led by our African American leaders and our Black youth who sought fit to make sure that they made their voices heard. And we had over 2,000 Simi Valley residents show up, moms, dads, children, brothers, sisters, friends, allies, to show the city of Simi Valley that in fact, we do believe that Black Lives Matter in this city and that it is important to honor that. We also, following that, we had our first ever Juneteenth event celebrating Black culture, Black music, Black history, Black lives in Lemon Park just a few weeks after that event. And I'm hopeful that we continue to see that. But we cannot continue to say that we honor Black lives and Black history unless we follow the traditions of looking at the accountable measures and the history of why Black lives are not treated as equal and why they do not get the justice that they deserve. Especially right now during a pandemic when only 5% of Black Americans have received the COVID vaccine. They have disparate healthcare outcomes. We need to make sure that we fight for our Black community here in Simi Valley. We need to make sure that we fight for our Black residents, for our Black, you know, history to be highlighted in our public schools, that we don't opt out of that history because it is an important history. As a history teacher myself, and I've taught history for over 20 years, I can't tell you how much my Black students felt such pride in hearing about Mansa Musa and hearing about Zimbabwe and hearing about all of the wonderful history coming out of all of those countries in Africa, which is a continent, not a country. I just want to remind everyone. So it's really important that we follow and celebrate that history, but that we also follow the tradition that has now begun here by our Black youth of honoring Black Lives Matter. And that includes saying the names of people like Trayvon Martin, like Breonna Taylor, like George Floyd, and making sure that we honor them by making sure that they have justice and making sure that the next generation has justice. And that includes denouncing the events of January 6 at the U.S. Capitol. That includes making sure that we hold our own police department accountable and making sure that we are treating every citizen, regardless of the color of their skin, equally and with equal justice. And that includes looking at statistics and data and hammering that out to see, are we treating everyone equally? And if not, how can we do better? And having conversations with our Black community. That's really, really important that we do that, that we sit down with them, that we listen, and that we acknowledge the pain and trauma that they have been facing for hundreds of years in our community and in this country, and that we acknowledge it, we listen, and then we come up with solutions by listening to them. So I'm hopeful that this is a first step, but it's definitely not the last step, and we definitely have a ways to go. But I know that if we work together and listen to the Black community here in Simi Valley and listen to the trauma that they've experienced, that we can move forward together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge?
I would just like to thank the city staff for putting together that proclamation. It was well deserved, and it's a very good proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kavanagh?
I'd like to echo Councilmember Judge's comments on thank you to the staff for doing a wonderful resolution. And I'm very proud of the city that we are doing this and are able to recognize Black History Month because it is a very important topic, especially in this day and age. And I enjoy listening to a lot of the new history, or not new history, excuse me, the history of certain things that I wasn't familiar with. So it's been very interesting. So thank you to the staff.
And I too appreciate what staff has done to prepare the resolution. And I appreciate Black History Month because it's a rich history, and it's bringing to light all of the good that's been done and will continue to build. And I'm glad the city is part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 1D2, certificates of appreciation to outgoing Citizens' Election Advisory Commission members. And I will be presenting this item. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. It is with great appreciation that for the last time, we are recognizing an outgoing group of Citizens' Election Advisory Committee members. Chair Gary King, seven years. Tom McLean, 10 years. Jan Smith, three years. Don Diamond, four years. Wendy Morley, four years. Rain Wiseman, seven months. And Sean Brooks, seven months. During their tenure, committee members diligently reviewed candidate and committee financial campaign statements, assisted with the identification of financial campaign disclosure issues, assisted in preparing orientation briefings for general municipal elections, and informing candidates and committees of the city's campaign finance ordinance and state election code requirements. Please join me in congratulating the outgoing CAC committee members for their dedication and service to the city on a job well done. And the certificates of appreciation will be mailed. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the council? We'll start with Elaine.
Thank you, Lucy. I appreciate your presenting and providing these certificates. I wanted to say a personal thank you to this committee. I recognize it's a bit of a thankless job because it has performed meticulously outside of the public eye. But as a recent candidate, I know from experience that they caught little things on our paperwork, and they truly had the city's best interests at heart in making sure things were done correctly. And I wanted to also commend them and thank them for the orientation that they provided. It was, I appreciated sitting through and enjoying that participation this fall, where they made certain that all of the candidates were aware of the city's structure and function and appropriate contacts. Anyway, they have served our community well. This is a storied committee, and I know the reasons why it's been disbanded. But I just want to say thank you. I know some of you, Gary Tom, served seven, 10 years. I mean, that's truly a thankless but appreciated job. And whether seven months or 10 years, thank you again for having the best interest of our city at heart. So appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge? Councilmember Luvenos?
Well, go ahead, Councilmember Judge.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got two mics going here, and I got to figure out which one to hit. I just want to thank those committee members, especially the folks who are, a couple of those folks were on there for 10 years. My goodness, that's amazing. Thank you for all the hard work you've done. It's just one of those things. Other people are doing the same job, so we don't need to repeat it. But thank you again for all that you've done and your due diligence and your work. And like everything else in Simi Valley, your volunteerism makes the city great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kavanagh? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Luvenos?
I'll keep my comments brief. I just want to thank you for volunteering your time all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to offer my thanks and congratulations to all of our CAC members. Having them monitor my 460s for the last five, six years has been interesting. They do a great job. It's actually a thankless job to a certain degree. But they do a great job. They kept us all on the up and up and kept, made sure our filings were correct. And I think that's something, you know, that was very helpful to those candidates, especially when it's something new and you don't understand it. Because if you haven't looked at the filing rules in the FPPC, it's very confusing. So I really appreciate everything CAC has done for us and our city clerk. So thank you all, and I wish you well.
I too would like to thank our CAC group for everything they've done for the past several years that I've been involved in council and being mayor. They did a great job, and they found problems that you wouldn't otherwise see that maybe would be found at the state level or something like that, and you had the ability to correct it. I want to assure them that this was an act of keeping government the size that it should be. Because as I think it was Councilmember Judge said, it's so technically advanced now that you can go online and find out all the information. You can contact the FPPC and get even more information. And we're just duplicating services. And so I'm truly hoping what we did is freed up some individuals that will now have time to volunteer for other services that we do need. And I just want to assure them that this was simply a matter of cost and not duplicating services. And we very much appreciate the years that they've served.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 2, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. And we have no public statements on this item. We don't have this evening any items under appointments, special presentations, or informational reports. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items this evening under public hearings either. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 5, public statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. All persons who registered by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during this public statements, item 5, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin the Zoom's public statements.
Thank you. We're all ready for the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Rebecca Alberon. Ms. Alberon? Ms. Alberon, please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker, Rup Man.
Can you hear me?
Rebecca?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, hi, thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Rebecca. And I am just wanting to voice my opinion for, actually my support, for the proclamation to recognize this month as Black History Month. I think it's really important, and it's steps forward, visible step forward that need to be taken. So I do thank you guys for bringing that up. I also want to recognize that just visibly it is important to continue to do the work and recognize Black history. I know that there's been various social media posts that are giving history on our Black leaders that we've had. And I just want to point that out and appreciate that because we are paying attention to all those things. So that's very important for us. And then I did want to bring something up, which was a statement that was made by the mayor Mashburn regarding Hank Aaron. And it was extremely disturbing. So I am hoping that this will be addressed, that the mayor will have something to say about his statements. I know that there was an attempt at some public apology that was made on Facebook, but I do feel like it needs to be addressed at city council. Some of the statements were really just reprehensible, talking about whether, what behaviors are acceptable when fighting for injustices and fighting for racial equity. I think that, you know, those are just political ploys as far as, you know, what is acceptable when people are fighting against oppression. So I think that those need to be addressed. I also want to, just very quickly, I note that this is on the agenda as far as the battery backup system. And I just want to say thank you to staff for bringing that up. I know that it was something that had been brought up actually by Councilwoman Luvenos more than a year ago. And so I am interested in hearing, you know, what changed because I know that she had requested for, you know, some sort of solution, but she was actually met with opposition from the council. And I specifically recall Councilmember Mike Judge, you know, saying, well, you know, it's, the lights are out, so you stop. But that's actually, you know, not, that's not what's happening. And during these PSP events, I think it's important. So thank you to staff for bringing that up. But what I would like to know is what changed from a year ago to now? Because I do recall that, you know, one of the reasons...
Wrap it up, your time is up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. One of the reasons why they did not want to explore the battery backups was because the city did not want to take on legal responsibility for it. So I would like an update on what changed from then to now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rup Man?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm here today. My name is Rup Man. I'm from Simi Valley. And I'm here today to make a direct statement on Mayor Mashburn's statement that he made on Hank Aaron. I asked this on Mayor Mashburn's public Facebook page. I did not get a response, so I wanted to ask it here. I wanted a direct response on what the mayor meant when he said that Hank Aaron did not dwell on discrimination to the point of it being obnoxious or anything like that, unquote. You speak like what your perception of Hank Aaron's legacy is, is quote unquote, "the acceptable way to fight against systemic oppression." I would like a direct statement from the mayor on what he meant by dwell on discrimination to the point of being obnoxious and what Mayor Mashburn meant by saying that. I did not know personally that talking about discrimination or fighting against it is obnoxious. I actually feel the opposite. I feel like people of color, BIPOC, Black people, Indigenous people have to fight against discrimination because it is systemically placed upon them in every single system in the United States. I also do not appreciate the whitewashing of Hank Aaron's efforts in the civil rights movement because Hank Aaron was a vocal leader in the civil rights movement until his recent death. Please, Mayor Mashburn, I am asking you to speak directly to this notion of being, quote... Please, Mayor Mashburn, I am asking you to speak directly to this notion of being quote unquote, "obnoxious." And I do not feel that a white man should be dictating what is acceptable in the fight for justice for people of color. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cassandra Douglas?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Keith Mashburn and members of city council. In the last city council meeting, Mayor Mashburn whitewashed the racism that baseball legends and civil rights activist Hank Aaron experienced. He said that Aaron was never obnoxious about the racism that, and that he still went on and played baseball without letting it bother him. Like Mashburn has some way of knowing what it's like to be a black man being, experiencing racism or hatred simply by the color of his skin. Mashburn's words were a blow to local activists who have been trying to get through to members on city council who constantly cosigned to racist behaviors and policies. Mashburn released a statement via Facebook that was not sufficient. Today, the city council adopted a resolution declaring February Black History Month, which is great. However, and it's a step forward, however, it is not sufficient. Mashburn needs to commit to learning how to be actively anti-racist. And the council needs to adopt an anti-racist resolution that includes a zero policy tolerance, a zero tolerance policy for racism. And that includes behavior on social media like we experienced last year with Mike Judge. I also do want to echo Rebecca's statement about the battery backup system. We do need an update on the change from last year to now. And that's it. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Marcel McCullough?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please get a little bit closer to the mic, please.
Is that better? All right, I'm calling in tonight to address comments Mayor Mashburn made regarding the baseball legend Hank Aaron's death and legacy. Mayor Mashburn spoke about Aaron's experiences with racism and civil rights activism and said, quote, "he didn't dwell on discrimination to the point where it became obnoxious," end quote. I do take issue with this statement. In the past year, we've seen an unprecedented amount of support for the Black Lives Matter movement, including here in Simi. And with that has come criticism from many quarters that those types of protests aren't acceptable. Many consider them obnoxious and annoying because it's bringing attention to an unpleasant truth that racism is still alive and well in our country and in our town, particularly anti-black racism. And people are actually out here fighting for their lives and it's becomes, it gets dismissed as an obnoxious annoyance. The truth is, there is no acceptable form of protests in the eyes of many white citizens. Whether it be kneeling during the anthem, a peaceful march or blocking traffic, any and every action will be condemned in some way and the message effectively ignored. We have to listen to our black neighbors and citizens, even when the message may be hard for us to hear. We can't sit here and say, great, it's February, it's Black History Month as a city and still continue these patterns of racist behavior. Mayor Mashburn, it does seem that you realize you misspoke based on your recent Facebook post addressing your comments, but there was a glaring omission, an actual apology. It is Black History Month. Please apologize properly for these remarks and consider furthering your education about anti-racist activism. And that would really go for the whole board. We have a majority white city council and our city is increasingly diverse. I would like to know if we have a diversity, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the word. Not a commission, a, a panel. And I think that some anti-racist education would do everyone on the, on the city council a lot of good. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sophia Bagdad Zarian?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dr. Sophia Bagdad Zarian and I'm a resident of our wonderful city. Thank you for passing the resolution earlier this evening, recognizing Black History Month as an important, as it is an important step. I'm speaking today regarding Mayor Mashburn's comments at the last city council meeting about the passing of Hank Aaron and the comments regarding obnoxiousness. Like many, I was taken aback at the language being used. But then I thought, perhaps the mayor does not realize what he is saying. I would like to give the mayor the benefit of doubt in that perhaps he's not aware of the racist connotation of his words. It is possible, given we are all socialized in this world and sometimes can't exactly see the stereotypes that we hold. To that end, I would like to take this opportunity to provide some information to the mayor and to our community about why what was said was so wrong. First, what was said about Mr. Aaron was not true at all because he was a civil rights activist, as others have mentioned. And he was outspoken about the racism he experienced as a baseball player. Second, when Mayor Mashburn stated that Mr. Aaron did not become obnoxious about the racism he experienced, it is essentially the same as using the word uppity, which has a very real racist connotation. I know the two are not the same words, but the phrasing and sentence structure that was used was very reminiscent of that word. And that is why we heard it the way we did. For those not familiar with why the word uppity in relation to black people is racist, here I provide a definition from Merriam-Webster. Quote, "Uppity has a long history of being applied to members of racial minorities and especially to black people. Its association with such uses and the bigotry they represent means that when it is used to describe a member of a racial minority, it is likely to be considered especially offensive," end quote. Third, by saying that Mr. Aaron did not become obnoxious about the racism he experienced, the mayor was implying that some are obnoxious about it. But what does that mean? How can one be obnoxious about a horrible experience they had where they were discriminated against or die from? Does that mean that the residents of this city who are sharing their experiences of racism are being considered obnoxious by your mayor? I personally don't think that this is about obnoxiousness in that sense. Rather, I think we should all have compassion for all those who experience racism and understand that they have the right to express their sadness and their fear in whatever way they feel will help them. It is theirs to express and ours as allies to listen and be nonjudgmental. Lastly, I would like to earnestly ask the mayor to reflect on those words and apologize. For even if you did not mean it, those words hurt some of your constituents. And by apology, I don't mean the "I'm sorry if your feelings were hurt" kind. I mean simply, I'm sorry, I will reflect and do better and then actually do that. Because when you don't want people, because when you don't want people being quote unquote, "obnoxious," it's because it makes you uncomfortable. But fighting racism shouldn't be about anyone's comfort. And it's always okay to say that you're sorry. As where the woman's comment earlier about having a diversity or anti-racism task force of some kind. Yeah, we, we actually do. The mayor started it. I've asked to be on it a couple of times and I have yet to hear back about it. As far as I know, they've made a few times, but nothing's come of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nandita Sundara Pandian?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
I want to echo what other people have said on this call towards demanding a direct explanation of Mayor Mashburn's earlier racist comment. However, I also want to put it on record that this is not a random incident, but a part of a larger pattern of his racism. As a mayor of the city, you were supposed to represent everyone and your actions have shown that you're not interested in doing this. Apologizing is the first step, but cannot be the last. You need to actionably show that you're committed towards unlearning your own racism. I believe that until you can become a leader for everyone in this community, you should step down because you're doing your position a disservice. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Reese Holland?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Greetings, Mayor Mashburn and city council. I hear everyone calling in, asking for an apology. And I want to be sure that Mayor Mashburn truly understands why he's apologizing. Replay these comments today. Take them to heart, each and every speaker's words. And I feel like you might want to also think about taking the next step. And I strongly encourage you to enroll in the Oxnard College course, Anthropology R114, African American Culture and Experience. Once you've completed the course, I have a feeling you'll be more capable of understanding exactly the, the impact of your words and what exactly you're apologizing for. The course starts March, in, in March, and there's 26 seats available, so plenty of room. If you're worried that attending the course will impact your time and handle your mayoral tasks, consider that being unaware of historical racism is probably bad enough that you should otherwise resign, like the previous speaker said. Now, Simi Valley unfortunately has a growing reputation for racism. We have the Mia Poncetto incident. We have the Jew flu picture from our Trader Joe's that's been making it on national news, making it around the world. The statements from Mayor Mashburn regarding, you know, the, the legendary Hank Aaron and his, his legacy as a civil rights hero. We've, we've got to stop this trend. We've got to go full reverse, 100% the opposite direction. Start actually recognizing what racism is, what it is that these, you know, these actions are doing, how they affect our constituency. And most importantly, how they affect Simi Valley's standing in the world. We're starting to get piled on. It's getting like Joe Dirt bad at this point. We, we've really got to get, do something about this. Our reputation is in the, in the drain. The attempts to remove Ruth Lou Evinos for telling people their rights for an ICE raid, that was absolutely ridiculous. That's just anything anybody should be able to say without it being controversial. So that's, you know, Simi Valley's got a lot of problems with racism. We've got to work on this. We've got to work on it at every level. In our schools, in city council, on the streets, in our stores, in the way that we pay our workers everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the list of public comments.
Okay, at this time, we'll have comments by the council regarding statements, the public statements. And we will start with, let's start with Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to include a short quote from one of the books by Hank Aaron. Quote, "It really made me see for the first time a clear picture of what this country about," he said. "My kids had to live like they were in prison because of kidnap threats and I had to live like a pig in a slaughter camp. I had to duck. I had to go out the back door of the ballparks. I had to have a police escort with me all the time. I was getting threatening letters every single day. All of these things have put a, put a bad taste in my mouth and it won't go away. They carved a piece of my heart away." And when we say that, you know, what they went through was not hard, not just on them, but on their families, on their children, to constantly worry and be stressed about whether or not they're going to exist. And then that's gaslighting. To deny the experiences and the trauma that black people in this community and people of color experience every day is the definition of gaslighting. So I too would like to see our mayor apologize, just simply apologize. And it's, this is not a shaming. This is just, this is where we have room for growth. No one is perfect. That's why pencils have erasers. And we all have the opportunities to grow as individuals and to make sure that our city is a welcoming place for everyone because it does impact the next generation. And I am tired, as are many people of color in this community, especially our black community, of seeing people of color being traumatized by the constant gaslighting on this dais, in our schools and in our communities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge?
I have no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipster?
Since these are comments that are in general related to the mayor, I'm sure he will be commenting. I do think that our mayor's behavior throughout his, throughout his time of serving as our mayor is one of embracing, one of accepting of people of all race and color. And so I, I, I do believe he intends and means well and, and truly is trying to be embracing of all. With regards to the question about what has changed in terms of our battery backup discussion, certainly our liability has not changed. I think the frequent, frequency of PSBS events have changed. And so we are being responsible and taking a much closer look at ways that we can protect our citizens. So I look forward to that conversation later on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh?
I want to thank everybody for calling in and expressing their views. That is your right as an American citizen or a member of this community. So I also think the majority of the comments were directed towards the mayor. I agree with the comments of Councilmember Lipster. Our mayor has embraced this community and has supported this community and is there for anyone who would like to speak to him. So I would like to allow him the time to respond as he wishes. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the support. I, I made my comments. And I choose not to make any comments tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item six, the consent calendar. And there are two resolutions for consideration this evening. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Consent item number three, resolution number 2021-02. A resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, accepting the public improvements for track number 5523, located on the northwest corner of Tableau Street and Eileen Street. And consent item number four, resolution number 2021-03. A resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, approving an application for funding and execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the 2019-2020 funding year of the state CDBG mitigation program.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, items one through four.
I'll second it.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item four.
Okay, we have motion second.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item four.
Okay, we'll pull item four.
Would you like me to amend my motion or do you want to wait?
Yeah, let's go ahead and amend it to one through three and then we'll find out.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to the consent calendar for items one through three.
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay, call for the vote for the three.
Please vote yes for me.
Please vote yes for me.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Councilmember Lou Evinos, hold on one moment before you question four. Apparently, we missed one public speaker and we're gonna finish with the consent calendar and then go back to that public speaker. If you could, I don't know if you can communicate with them, ask them to wait just a minute. Okay, Councilmember Lou Evinos, your question on number four.
Yes, I see that this is for CDBG funds. And I had a question about the, that it's used to look at the, the cities and more parks, Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks in terms of what to do with emergencies, disasters. And I would like that as part of this grant that we make it public. I, I know that we had two families that lost their homes during one of the last fires that we had last year. And they weren't sure whether or not they were within the boundaries of the city or not. Turned out they were just outside the boundaries of the city. But when victims of fires in our vicinity don't know, you know, whether or not they are part of the city or not and they don't know where to seek help or assistance and it takes days and days and they're homeless and they don't know where to turn to or, you know, whether or not they're in an unincorporated part of the city or in an incorporated part of the city, whether they need to go to the county or the city for resources. I think that's something that every resident should know and should be aware of whether or not they are within the boundary. So I'm asking in alignment with these grant funds and to make sure that everyone in our, in our vicinity knows, is it possible for us to put a map out that's easily accessible so that people- so that people know whether or not they are part of the city or whether they are in an unincorporated part of the city? Is that possible?
Yeah, let me have the city manager answer that one.
Separate issue from what we're asking for with the grant here. This issue comes up sometimes in the Knowles and different areas in terms of jurisdictional lines, but all somebody has to do is call our dispatch center, and they will let them know where they are in terms of the city, because this happens quite frequently when somebody might call in to get police services, and they actually, they live on the other side of the county, and the county would respond to that. So.
Well, I'm, I'm asking specifically because what happened was, they saw the fire that was coming. I spoke to the residents who lost their home, and they said that they they had seen the fire burning for, for a long, long time, but that units were dispatched to the Ronald Reagan Library, and that it burned for over four hours, he said, before their home was finally consumed by the fire. And so it seems like there was a miscommunication, and if that maybe they had known, you know, who they were supposed to communicate directly, or maybe people did not know whether or not they were within city boundaries or county boundaries. And I know that we, our, our fire department doesn't care whether or not you're in incorporated land or not, but it would have been nice for them to get the resources that they needed. And seeing as how global warming is real, and it continues to impact our weather, and we can keep having more and more extreme weather events.
You're, you're making some interesting, as some, we understand where we feel for that, those, those two families, but I think we're missing, as I read this report, what I see is that this is actually a step forward to help everyone that lives in the area, that this is a concerted effort between Simi Valley, Moore Park, and Thousand Oaks, and maybe some of those concerns that you're addressing would actually be rectified by this tri-city coordination and grant and communication. So you are making, as I hear it, you are making the case for the need for us to approve this item this evening.
Yes, I am. What I'm asking for is transparency and accountability in this process, for the public to be included and to be given this information. We also have interagency here within the city, but I haven't heard a report in months. So, you know, within the city, the, the Parks and Rec and the school district, and so I would like not to repeat that pattern of lack of accountability and transparency, and that's what I'm asking for here, is if we can get reports on the status of this grant, and that the public be apprised of the status, and then the information and the data and the hard number, and the geography with, with, with regard to how this impacts our residents. Will that be available? And will we have reports, there are timelines for reports so that the public knows?
Well, those are separate issues. This, this is a grant that is looking at interoperability between the EOCs so that we can work closer with our partner cities when these events come up. The way that I, that I understand what you're asking is that people be made aware of the geographic areas where they live. And, you know, certainly there are maps available for that. That's something that, you know, when people call our dispatch center, like I said, we we have maps and we have the, you know, through our 911 system, the ability to know where they are, and we will get the services to them. We don't, we don't ever tell anybody, well, you live in the county area, so we're not going to respond. If somebody calls from the county area and it's a 911 emergency, our officers go there. If the sheriffs, you know, are not in the area, which is often the case, because they're unincorporated county areas. So I see this as two different issues. I, I certainly understand the concern for getting help to people when they need it, but I think, I think we're dealing with two different things. There are plenty of maps available. Somebody can, you know, they can, they can call our dispatch center and say, hey, you know, I, I have an emergency in this area, and we're going to get them the resources. I mean, that's the important thing. We also have GIS mapping, you know, that whenever a major incident happens, whether it's the, you know, whether it's the Thomas Fire or something of that nature, that's, that's the whole purpose of this, is to get people together and have the EOCs functioning together so that when, you know, that's resource management. That's exactly what we do, so we know where to go. So, I mean, I, I certainly understand the concern, but we're not going to leave anybody high and dry in an emergency, and that's exactly what this is for. So if the public needs to be educated on, on where they live specifically, it's, it's no different than when you're trying to decide where your property line on your house is. You know, there are technical parts of it, but, you know, there is, there is no lack of getting anybody help when there's an emergency.
Okay. My, my other question is with regard to the impact of PSBS events, because we have seen over the past year and a half how inaccurate the information is with regard to PSBS events. And just within our city alone, we have had Parks and Rec, RSRPD, thank you very much, step up and offer evacuation centers at RSRPD centers, and then they had to cancel them because they didn't have electricity available. So is there a way for, or are we going to have a hotline or some way? I prefer a phone that people can communicate whether or not they have electricity or power or internet, and please don't tell me online, because if people don't have internet and they don't have electricity, they can't do that. This is something that we've gotten actually from a veteran request of this as well, that when we have emergencies, that we have some sort of hotline where they can communicate with us and vice versa. Is that a possibility in including in this grant so that we can communicate with those who don't have access to electricity or internet?
It certainly can be part of it, because obviously, if you look, if you look here, consultant services is one aspect of it. Another is EOC radio antennas, communication equipment upgrades, and then emergency personnel costs. Now, one of the things that we have recently upgraded is our AM radio channel, and I don't know that a lot of people are aware of that, but we utilize that as a way to reach people outside of just, you know, that don't have internet. They, if they have an AM radio, they can tune into the, to the station, and our emergency services coordinator puts out important information when those, those incidents happen. So, yeah, to answer your question, we, that's the, that's the hope.
I didn't even know we had that. Can you share that with me? What is our AM radio station?
Well, I, I don't, I can't give you the exact, but I can get, I can get it for you. Yeah, it's, it's like, I think it's like 590 or something like that.
That would be wonderful.
It's definitely at one extreme end of the dial.
Right, right.
It's like the first station.
And we did, we did, we did speak about that previously. Towards the beginning of the pandemic, we made sure that, that information was placed on that radio for, for our citizens, our residents. And so we've talked, it's, it's being used for that.
I believe it's, I believe it's 590, but the other thing, if you look here on the grant, there is communication equipment upgrades. We, we do have a ham radio operator, so we are also able to use ham radios if, you know, everything goes down. That's, that's part of what we're trying to do, and, and just reaching out to our partner cities so that we can, you know, just like with any emergency, you're better off if you're all on the same page, and that's what we do try to do.
Okay. So, okay, yeah, if you could communicate to me at some point what that radio station is, I'll gladly put it on social media to let people know, because, you know, people do ask, and not everyone has, you know, when we have fires and PSBS events, and sometimes all those things happen at the same time, people don't have access to information, and they, they, you know, I know SDE has said, well, check online, but when you don't have internet or electricity, that's impossible to do. So I'm glad to hear that we have a radio station. As soon as you find out, or someone can let me know what that station is, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that. I can, I can get that information too. We all, we also, you know, people also, believe it or not, they call the police station when things happen, and they, you know, light up all the lines, and sometimes that creates an issue, but we do try to get information out for them. And in an emergency like this, we actually put a staff person or extra staff people just to answer those calls, so we can segregate that out from the emergency calls, because it does become problematic. But, you know, there's a lot of different resources here, and I, I think the main thrust of the grant, though, is to just get us working together so that we're not isolating ourselves, you know, from the cities that are immediately to our west.
And, and just so you know, it is AM 530.
530.
And it is broadcast, as I recall, because I've listened to before. The reason I know is because my, when my battery goes out on the car, it resets to that. And so it, it broadcasts in both English and Spanish repeatedly, the, the messages as we place them there. So AM 530.
530, I'm going to write that down, because.
I have one more question, Chief, and it may or may not be applicable, but with the recent decision to encrypt radio communications, will that impact this as well if there is, you know, an emergency of this nature? Will the radios be encrypted as well? Or will there be a way besides the radio to communicate emergencies like wildfires or earthquakes or any other kind of natural disasters?
That, that's a good question. What we, what we have right now is just encrypting for personal information, but one of the exceptions to that is if there is a wildfire or a, or a city emergency, we would unencrypt the radios, because obviously, we have to be able to communicate with our partner agencies. So, and also, you know, public gets information through scanners and things like that. So one of the things that we're looking at doing with that, because I know encryption is, is a, an item that people are very concerned about, is that, you know, as our staffing gets better, we're looking for ways to unencrypt so that we can find a better way of doing that. That way, we wouldn't, you know, have to go back and forth. But in a major emergency, like an earthquake or a fire, our staff is instructed to unencrypt so that we can communicate with our partner agencies, and so members of the public can get information that might be relevant outside of just, you know, the internet.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask that question is because when we had the Woolsey Fire and in the past several fires that we've had, there were a lot of people that were following, like VC scanner and things like that, so that they could help each other out. I know we have quite a few residents that own horses and livestock, and that takes time. When you have a wildfire that's coming at you very quickly, it takes time to get horse trailers and to get, you know, people with large trucks and vehicles so they can evacuate your, especially large animals, farm animals safely. So it's wonderful to hear that it will be encrypted during, unencrypted during those kinds of emergencies so that people can get the help that they need. And we have a wonderful community here in Simi Valley that helps each other out during times of emergencies, as such, providing horse trailers and things like that. And we've had people from somewhere come here and vice versa, people from here go to Malibu and help with horse trailers, and I applaud our community for that. So thank you, Chief, for your report. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief, may I make a comment? It's a nice, it's a nice one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm the chief now.
I know, I'm chief and mayor, sorry, both of you. I wanted to compliment you on this. Having, being a graduate of CERT, and also for a short time a DSW worker, I know how important this is, and working together with our, our sister cities is the best way to accomplish everything that she was questioning. You know, the horse, our large stock, you know, getting them out of the way, communication between what's closed, because if you figure it out, there's only one way per se between the three cities. There's a little side road, but there's really only one section. So it's very important that we be able to communicate with each other in any case of an emergency. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I'll, I'll accept that thanks, but I'm really basically, I, I am the water boy of the police department here. I get to come up and, and present all the good work of the staff. And if you haven't had a chance to meet yet, we have a new emergency services coordinator, Eileen Connors, and she's great. I mean, this is stuff that she's done on her own, you know, bringing her expertise to this, and she approached me with this and said, hey, this is something we should really look at doing. And so I really rely on the staff to, to help me come up here in front of you guys and look good. So, so thank you. I'll pass that along to them. So, thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion for four.
I will move that we pass Item Four.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Please vote yes for me.
Thank you.
Please vote yes for me also.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I apologize for the delay to the speaker, and if the speaker's still with us, we'll have the public comments.
Yes, thank you. Ms. April Monte?
Hi, so, thank you very much for, for hearing me. I, I, I appreciate that the mayor attempted to make an apology about the Hank Aaron comment. And yes, while, while intentions are often good, but the words don't come. The most important issue with this is that I, I want to address is that the impact of our words is what matters, not, not our intent. And let me preface this by saying, I'm learning this too, as a white person myself. I've learned this, follow the following, only by listening to Black anti-racist educators, not because I'm more sensitive to racism than other white people. So if you walk down a street in close proximity to other people, and you're flailing your arms, and you hit several people, so after we realize we hit them, we just apologize, and we realize that we shouldn't have been flailing our arms around, and we correct our behavior, and we stop. We don't get defensive and angry at those people for existing. We don't begrudge them for demanding the respect not to be hit. And moreover, it's irrelevant even why we were flailing our arms, because the impact of hitting those people next to us was damaging, regardless of the reason for it. And anyone in relationships will tell you that this is what an apology is versus what it is not. So an apology is, I'm sorry my words were tone deaf, and can you help me understand why this was harmful? And what can I do to do better? What can I change? And an apology is not, I'm sorry you misinterpreted what I said, that wasn't my intention, or I'm sorry you feel that way, or you're making a big deal out of nothing. Those aren't apologies. Those are defensive reactions. It's actually called gaslighting, really. So my suggestion, anytime any of us speaks publicly about racism, we have to deeply think long and hard about our words and the impact they will have. And also, the question we really need to be asking ourselves is, what's wrong with us that we are having a conversation about what is an acceptable tone in which a Black man spoke up for his human rights? What poison exists in us and our systems and why, that we feel like this is even up for debate? This whiteness exists in both Republican and Democrats, because we all live comfortably in systems that are still unjustly imprisoning Black people and people of color in cages, literally, and in policy. And I'm hopeful, then, in the future, we can all put into practice what we've been told our whole lives, that the most effective apology is changed behavior and changed policy. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are no items this evening under Item Seven, Continued Business. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item Eight A. Authors, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Econolite for the installation of traffic signal battery backup systems at various intersections throughout the city. Authorize staff to bid the acquisition and installation of generators at city facilities, and approve reappropriation of funds from a December 2017 financing. And Ron Fuchiwaki is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and councilmembers. Tonight's staff is recommending three actions that will enhance the city's resiliency during PSPS, or Public Safety Power Shut-Off Events, or any other power outage condition. The first is to install traffic signal battery backup systems at approximately 50 intersections throughout the city. The second is to install generators for the library, senior center, and city hall. And the third is to use funds from the December 2017 financing to fund these resilience, resiliency projects. As everyone is aware, during recent months, Southern California Edison has implemented several PSPS events. In addition to the impact of, to residences and businesses, the loss of electrical power affects many city facilities, including water pumping stations, sewer lift stations, street lights, traffic signals, and city buildings. Some facilities have power backup, backup power, I should say, but others, such as traffic signals, do not. In addition, the senior center, library, and city hall are likely to lose power during a PSPS event. The senior center and library do not have backup power, and the generator at city hall needs to be upgraded. In recent PSPS events, many traffic signals lost power, and the city staff placed temporary stop signs at dark intersections. In lieu of placing stop signs during every power outage event, staff reviewed options including the installation of traffic signal battery backup systems, the placements of generators at traffic signal intersections, and the installation of reflective type tape on traffic signal heads in order to maintain some level of traffic signal operation during PSPS or other outage events. A battery backup system is located at the intersection and activates as soon as SCE power is lost, similar to our computerized GPS backup systems that we all have on our, on our, at our desks. Power goes out, the battery backup picks in, and I don't even think you notice a glitch or anything. So the battery backup system for signals is very much the same. The batteries can operate a traffic signal in full operating mode or in flashing red mode, depending on how the signal controller is programmed. A battery backup system is simple and straightforward and costs up to 10,500 per intersection for equipment, taxes, and installation. There would also be additional costs for extra spare batteries and chargers. Generators could also be used to provide backup power for traffic signals. However, placing generators at dark intersections requires extensive manpower, time, and money. Each intersection will require a manual placement of a generator at each traffic signal controller to change a jack, to change to generator operation during which time the traffic signal would be inarable. I guess it's similar to using a generator at your home. You don't know when the power goes out, but when it does. home. You don't know when the power goes out, but when it does, you have to go into your garage, find your generator, bring it out, get wall plugs from your refrigerator or other outlets and plug it in. So, in the meantime, you've lost power, you have nothing going. So a generator at a signal would be very much similar to that. In addition, response time would be determined on traffic and potentially exasperated by adjacent outages. Also, generators would need to be refueled, just like at home. Staff estimates a $600 charge per intersection to set up and take down a generator and maintain fuel level for continuous operation for each outage event. Adapting a traffic signal controller box to accept generator power would cost $4,000 per intersection, including the cost of the generator. While less expensive initially, it does not, does not provide the long-term resiliency for the city's traffic signal intersections. Another measure, measure that was briefly reviewed is the placement of the yellow reflective strip around the border of traffic signal backplates. I think you've all noticed that the on and off ramps, Caltrans has done that around their traffic signals. Although the signals would still be dark and inoperable, the reflective tape around backplates may help notify drivers of the presence of an interoperable traffic signal, especially during hours of darkness. Staff determined the installation of reflective tape costs an average of $9,000 per intersection. Based on our review, staff recommends implementing a battery backup system to most effectively and efficiently maintain the operation of traffic signals during PSBS events and other power outages. The initial concept would be to implement, implement the battery backup system at 50 intersections throughout the city that are most frequently dark during outage events, typically at the east end and west end of the city. As indicated, a battery backup system is up to $10,500 per intersection, depending on the type of battery, for a total of $525,000. Staff also recommends an additional $75,000 to acquire additional batteries and charging equipment to allow for swapping out fresh batteries during prolonged PSBS and emergency outages. In addition, staff recommends negotiating a contract with Econolite, a designated sole source vendor, to install the battery systems. Onto city buildings. The Simi Valley Civic Center contains four city buildings powered by two different SCE circuits. The library and senior center are located on one circuit, and the police station and city hall are located on another. Police station has a backup generator that provides sufficient power to operate the buildings and all systems. While city hall has a generator, it no longer meets the electrical demands of the building that has doubled in size since its, since its original construction. As a result, only a small portion of city hall is operational during PSBS events. And I can attest to that because I was sitting in the dark one day when the rest of city hall was up and operating. The senior center and library do not have generators and therefore are without power when, when the circuit is de-energized, or there is an outage due to emergency or natural disaster. Senior center and library have also become critical buildings as they are used as respite locations during extreme weather, such as cooling centers, and locations for residents to go during PSBS events. The city has investigated the generator needs for the library, senior center, and city hall. Based upon staff research, acquisition, and installation of the three generators, properly sized to operate their entire buildings, would cost approximately $850,000. The installation of generators at these three facilities will provide long-term resiliency for city buildings and allow for continued operation during emergencies and PSBS events. If approved, staff will immediately initiate a bid for the generator acquisition and installation, and return to City Council for approval of a contract for the required work. Staff recommends the City Council approve moving forward with the generator project and authorize staff to bid the project. Now, how to pay for this. In December 2017, the city closed a $6.4 million financing with Bank of America to fund the cost of three capital projects at that time. Replacement of the city's telephone system, retrofit of lighting within city facilities with LED fixtures, and the replacement of HBAC systems at several city buildings. These projects have been completed under budgeted and financed amounts. As a result, there remains approximately 1.09 million of unallocated funds from this financing. After consultation with bank representatives and special bond and tax council, it was determined these funds could be allocated to these two proposed resiliency projects. Based on the current estimates, the battery backup system for traffic signals at $600,000, and the generators at $850,000 could cost up to 1.45 million. Utilizing, utilizing the 1.09 million, the proposed resiliency project could fully be funded depending on the bids received for the generators and the battery backup systems. If, after receiving the bids for the generators, there is a need to supplement the 1.09 million with additional city funding, staff will make a recommendation to the City Council or a funding source, or to modify the generator project. Staff recommends the City Council approve the relocation, reallocation of their previously financed fund balance to the resiliency projects. In closing, staff recommends the City Council approve the recommendations in the staff report, which will enhance the city's resiliency during PSP events and other outage, power outage, or emergency conditions. That concludes staff report, and Brian and I are available for questions.
Thank you for that report. Before we get started on comments, I, I'm gonna advise the council of some action that I've been taking. I've, I've gone to the city attorney on numerous occasions now and said, whatever we spend on batteries or generators producing electricity for this city, that I would like to see the, at least, a bill sent to Edison, if not, some type of legal action taken. This is a modern city. This is 2021. We should have electricity. And we should have a power company that has an infrastructure that'll stand up in normal atmospheric conditions, and we don't. Now, if an earthquake hits and knocks down lines, that's different. We have fires every year. This county has fires every year. This state has fires constantly. And we have the winds. They need to step up to the plate and not wait until everything is failing and then causing us to come up with all this money to keep our residents safe. So I think it falls on them to keep our residents safe. Now, I don't have a lot of faith in them. So, we will go and put the money up front, unfortunately, because they're not gonna step up to the plate and start putting money into our infrastructure because theirs is so lousy. And I think they even saw evidence of that when they had their community resource vehicle borrow our senior center, only to have the power shut off over there. They didn't even know they were shutting off the power to the place they asked to use. So, I don't have a lot of faith in them. So I just want the council to know, when you're doing your questioning of the staff, that there's been an ongoing effort and the city attorney is working on the method by which we do, I call it cost recovery, but whatever, that we bill Edison for this. Now, whether we get it or not, that's, that's, remains to be seen, but at least the request is there. With that, we'll start with comments from...
Questions, yes. Yes, and I do concur with all your actions, Mayor. Thank you for taking them and standing for that, because I, absolutely right. Some questions about, and so, basically, you've been in three scenarios, and I want to go on record that I strongly support the battery backup system, but some of my questions deal with actually how that is implemented. You, in your report, you recommended that we, that, well, first of all, that Econolite is a sing, a sole source vendor.
Yes.
Would you explain that, what you mean by that description?
The sole source vendor designation indicates, means that, that due to various justifications, that we would not need to go out to a bidding process.
So what you're saying is that they're the ones that we always go to, to put up our lights, right now?
Or our traffic signal.
Our traffic signals, I should say, excuse me.
Everything is Econolite, they service it, et cetera.
Okay. My question is, well, first of all, why did we initially, well, when, when these traffic signals were installed, was it an option initially to have battery backup as part of the, of the light fixture? And going forward, is that something we should always do or think about? Or, I mean, was that an option that we chose not to pursue? Or that wasn't, where we weren't offered?
I think when most of the signals were installed many years ago, battery backup systems were not as available, or maybe not even thought of at that time. I think battery backup systems may have come into play 10 or 15 years ago, or maybe a little bit more. But lately, I, I think, I think one of the main reasons that it's not implemented at the time new signals are installed, and we really haven't installed that many new ones, is that up to this point, up to the PSBS events, the, the city would encounter, or any agencies encountered, you know, an occasional power outage, maybe impacting two or three intersections. You have city staff available to put out temporary stop signs. And so, it wasn't a, a significant or a major issue. Now, with the ongoing PSBS events, especially the ones we've encountered over the past six months or so, we know that it's gonna be somewhat of a regular thing. Our staffing and resources aren't capable of always addressing every single intersection. I think it was dark, especially this most recent.
Sure. No, with that, we understand. I understand completely. So going back then to them, to their, to Econolite being our single, our sole source vendor, and I'm, I'm very much a proponent of, of the open bid process, is because it is their equipment, are, could other companies fulfill this installation, or really, are they the only, or are they unique, are they in a unique position to be the ones to install the batteries? I guess what I'm asking is, could this be put out to a competitive bid, bid process realistically, or not because of the very nature of what is being asked?
I think that, I think the key is that, in order for any battery backup system, and there are a couple of other varieties that Econolite's looking at, it's, whatever is put in there has to be programmed such that it's going to work with our equipment. Now Econolite, as a major company, has proprietary software, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they're, they're somewhat, you know, a sole source in the sense that whatever you do, they need to be there to make sure it works with their equipment. So, we, we can ask them to look at other types of battery backup systems. It's not necessarily their system, but there are other systems that we could look at and perhaps save some more money.
Okay. But, but you're comfortable, in this instance, that it, that we are not constrained by the competitive bid process?
I, I don't think we're constrained by it. We, we do get, cities often do get into sole source situations. For instance, our radio system is all Motorola. And, and there are other systems in the city where you have certain proprietary software or equipment that is universal to municipalities or what have you, and you end up with them. Econolite happens to be one of the major manufacturers and installers of traffic signal component boxes. Now, there, there are others out there, but we have, I think we have 121 intersections and 120 are probably Econolite. I mean, it's, it's all their equipment.
Gotcha.
And it standardizes our ability to, to make modifications, because you, once we modify one, we can, we understand how to modify all. I don't think, I honestly don't think our, our pricing is gonna be hindered by the sole sourcing of this.
Okay, okay. Just a question about the $9,000 choice to, to put reflect their tape on the lights. I mean, I envision a ladder with a roll of tape and scissors, and I'm thinking, really nine grand to do that at every?
We, that estimate, that estimate was based on information we got from Caltrans.
I think Caltrans is overpaying, that's, so...
I, you know, no doubt, and, and, you know, maybe they had to buy four ladders instead of using the one. But i- if you look at each signal, there's one, two, three, four, five signal heads in each direction, so you may be looking at 16 to 20 signal heads controlling traffic when you're up there, putting on the tape, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It, it was a, I think the contract recently for the local intersections was time and materials. And so they have a tendency to be a little bit higher. They just keep track of the time that it takes and the material costs that they have, and then submit a bill to Caltrans. So, yes, it, it's probably a little high, but based on the information we had, it was, it came out to about nine grand.
Gotcha. Okay. And just, and I'm sorry to take off questions. One more, just so I understand, the funding source, this, the bond that was floated, that was used for replacement of phones, tele, HVAC, et cetera. Was it, and I'm, I'm grateful that the bank has said that we can use it for this purpose. Is, are they the ones making that discretion? What was the original wording with, with this?
Yeah, it, we did have to, because we did the financing on those specific projects, so all the bond documents are specific to those projects.
Right, right.
And the arm of the bank that we use is energy-related. So the financing was specific to energy, electronic type of products, technology, things of that nature. They have different arms of, you know, if we wanna do housing, we'd be talking to a different group of people. So we had to ask the bank if they would allow the reprogramming of the balance to another project, these two projects. We also had to check with bond counsel, our bond counsel, to make sure that we were within the, the documents that were drafted, and we had to check with our tax council to make sure there were no tax implications with it as well, which the bank wanted to make sure that we've, that obviously they want to be protected as well. So there were a number of steps we had to go through to get to the point where the bank would finally say, yes, we're good. We've, we've collectively, the, the bank has met, and they've gotten their team together, and they have agreed to allow this, this use for the, for this, these funds.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much. Well, I will, I'm, I'd like to make lots of statements about what I think we should do, but I know this is questioning time, so I'll, I'll yield and let you get to the next person, Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ron.
Councilman River Leipenos.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about access to internet. So, one of the issues that we're having with these power shutdowns is not just the power being out, but the internet being out as well. And I know that there's been lots of complaints from residents about spectrum and how their internet is down all the time. I know that AT&amp;T has backup generators for their internet so that they, their residents can continue to get internet, even if there's a power outage. But I know there's, I've gotten dozens and dozens of phone calls and emails from residents about spectrum. And so, I'm curious, is there any way that any of these backup generators, whether for the library or the city, or any of the other city buildings, can be used to make sure that we have internet as well, internet access? Because I know that's, people have lost days, you know, at work, they've lost income, schools have been shut down, teachers haven't been able to teach, students haven't been able to learn, people haven't been able to work because they, they lack access to the internet. So, is that something that's gonna be available with, with the spending, with the expenditure of these funds?
Well, once, once we get out of COVID, that's a, a big win. If, if we have the, once the, if the senior center and/or the library are up and running during a PSBS event, they should have internet access. And because they are used as a cooling station or respite location, individual residents could come to those two locations to take advantage of our, our internet, because we have free wifi at, at both of those locations. So...
Is that, is that just inside the building, or would it be like if you were outside the building? Because if, you know, if COVID doesn't go away, which it may not go away for a while with all the new strains that we're seeing, the mutations that we're seeing, if it doesn't go away, let's just suppose we don't ever go back to the new normal, which is probably gonna be the case, could people, and we, and we have to limit the number of people that are inside the library or the senior center, could someone, could we boost the signal, the internet signal, so that someone could drive up and be in their vehicle and have access to the internet if they parked near the senior center or near the library?
Yeah, yeah, yes. You, you have previously requested that we provide internet access out in the parking lot at the library, which we have done. So you, you would be able to be in the library parking lot if the library has power and utilize the city's free wifi, as well as the... utilize the city's free Wi-Fi, as well as the, both, all, all three of the buildings, there, there is bleed over out into the, into the parking areas and the public areas of Wi-Fi, out in the middle of our courtyard here at the, at the, at the civic center and some other areas. So you, we could probably support quite a number of people that take advantage of free Wi-Fi, as long as our buildings have power.
Okay, I, that was my main question, because I just wanted to make sure, like I said, sometimes the, the electricity is working, but the internet is not, is not. And so that's, that's a major issue, I know, for a lot of our residents that impacts our, our businesses as well, because we have businesses that, and I saw this not just in Simi Valley, but in neighboring cities as well, that they had to shut down because they couldn't take, they could only accept cash, they couldn't take credit cards, you know, or even PayPal or any, Benno, any of that stuff, because they didn't have internet. And so it's impacting our businesses as well. So I, I'm not sure how we help our businesses, maybe that's something for, I know council member Kavanaugh's on the EDC committee, but maybe that's something that we can look into is, is supporting our businesses in that way, so that, you know, they can continue to do business, because it's impacting our businesses as well, having the lack of access to internet.
Well, I can tell you on that particular topic, we do, we, the city has a contract, we entered into a contract over a year ago with SciFi Networks. SciFi Networks is providing fiber to all properties in the city. If a business does subscribe to SciFi, they have generators on their equipment, on their main hub equipment to keep their system running during power outages. So that's, we're probably about a year and a half away at this point in time, probably two years away from wiring up the city with the fiber, but we are, we are on our way to be able to provide that to both businesses and to our residences of the community.
Would that be accessible for schools as well?
School has their own fiber network, so that they.
They have their own fiber network?
Correct.
Okay, okay. My, my other question is, is this funding that just came up, or, you know, one of the, one of the comments was, you know, what changed? Because I asked this question about having battery backups on signals like the Ozonox has had for a while, you know, over a year ago, when SCE first came and talked about the PSBS events. And I said, you know, can we have battery backups? Because people are not going to know to stop, or if they, they, they know and they should do it, they won't do it. So what happened, or, you know, between then and now, besides the fact that we've had a number of PSBS events, that now we are choosing to use our funding to have more resiliency in the city?
I, I think I would point to page two of the staff report, which provides for the, the motorist has the liability, has the, the requirement to stop at a dark intersection. And the case, case law, excuse me, Lonnie, if I'm miss, misspeaking, but case law has shown that a city's liability, city does not have the liability in, in the event of an accident or some other occurrence that happens at a dark intersection. Now, we've taken that approach for a while with the PSBS events, but we've, I think the, the change is that we've understanding these PSP events, S events are, are getting worse, not getting better, they're getting more often, and the, they've tended to spread over the last couple of PSBS events. And at this point in time, we, we don't have enough stop signs to put out there, we, we don't have enough, we can't get them out fast enough in order to ensure the safety of the public. And I, I think at this point in time, the, the safety of the public, both motoring and pedestrian, are being compromised too, too often on a widespread basis, so we're presenting this option to the council to, to take a look at.
And have we had any car accidents?
I'm aware of one. I can say the city's gotten one claim as a result of a dark intersection, as a result of PSBS event. Anecdotally, we've heard of other accidents, but we haven't received any claims over them.
Okay, are we, are, are, well, I, I don't want to overstep the boundaries, but would, would this change our liability in any way by installing these battery backups?
Lonnie?
And I don't know if you can answer that in, or not, but.
Obviously, I don't think the city would want to change the liability profile, so whether it's Econolite, or Siemens, or whoever our contractors are, we'd have to make sure that when that contract is done, that our liability profile is still what the city would like. So let me put it that way, putting a new device in, we've got to check the contracts and check, check how that's to be done.
Okay, and then my last question, thank you, Lonnie, is a safety issue. Are we, do, are we going to have procedures in place? And, and just so you know, I think this is wonderful that we're having this, but I, I want to know if we're going to have safety procedures in place for the people that have to go in and do the battery backup? Like, is that gonna, it's, is it going to be timed so that they can do it during the day and not at night, where it's safe and they're seen? How is the battery backup exchange going to happen? And are we putting in place procedures to make sure that our city employees who are doing this job are safe?
I think that, well, a couple of different issues. One is, the, the life of the battery is going to be dependent upon whether it's on full cycle or blinking red. My initial recommendation is go blinking red, because the batteries will last longer. If we would, we, we keep, just like we do with the generators that we place out to make sure our water pumps continue to run, we continue to mod, and making sure those generators have fuel, we'll continue to monitor the gap, the intersections that are on battery backup. I think we would want to make sure that we time the replacement of the batteries when it is daylight, but my understanding, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, is, we, as you replace them, the batteries don't go dark, the, the intersection doesn't go dark. So we, they'll always continue to flash or, or be on their, their normal cycle. But in doing so, when we, when we do put these in, in place, and we, we will establish a safety procedure for the employees that are responsible for doing that, we'll be trained by the Econolite staff to let our staff know the procedure and how to do that, and we'll follow that procedure.
Okay, my last question is, is more of a request, but if, if this passes, and I hope that it does, but if this passes tonight, and we do install these battery backup blinking red lights, is there any way we could do something on social media, or, or the internet, Twitter, or Facebook, to let people know once they're installed, like, you know, this is what a blinking red light means? I know people are supposed to know it, I know, I know they're supposed to know it when they take their, their driver's test, but some people haven't taken driver's tests in a long time, or some people just, you know, choose not to remember. Is there any way that we can do kind of like a public education campaign once they're up and running so that people know or remember?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I just wanted to compliment you. This is a great, a great solution to the problem, utilizing the, and the bank allowing us to utilize the excess funding availability really comes in handy. And thank you to the mayor for billing SCE. Maybe we can add a service charge on top of that for all the time it's going to take us. I think it's a great idea. The, I, I like the idea of the flashing red, I, I think that's probably more practical in that it will last a little bit longer. And then you also have the option of putting it to a regular cycle on major intersections, you know, if we need to, like during rush hour, so that, that would help with that. I think it's a great thing. Councilmember asked about, you know, the internet, and you kind of answered that. The EDC is working for a broadband consortium for the entire county, so that will also be something that will be very beneficial in, in these types of situations. So it's all kind of in, in there together. I think it's a great idea. You guys worked out a really good program. I like the way you divided it up, we have the two generators for the senior center and the library, because they're on the Yosemite, and then we're on the Tampa one here. So I think that will, that will really be well. The only other thing I had is a really quick, easy question. I went through an intersection, and it has the, the red, the green, and the, the red, the yellow, and the green, and it's just the three circles. Is that a new style, or is that just because the back is broken off?
It's because the back is broken off, and, and we have, there's a list that we're in the process of repairing.
From the wind. I thought that might be the case, but it actually looked kind of nice. I mean, I'm like, why do we even need that back up there? But I was just wondering, I only saw it one place.
Your traffic engineer, it looks weird.
There you go, okay, okay. Oh, and I was somewhere, I was in a meeting recently, and somebody complimented our traffic engineer very heavily on how well the flow goes. So let them know that. And I said, he doesn't hear that a lot. So I said I would share that. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that it, since this PSBS events began, in talking to staff, talking to the city attorney, talking to the city manager, we all take risk. I mean, you know, getting up in the morning is a risk. And I think the city was looking at that, going, well, we don't have these outages very often, so we only have one or two intersections go down. And we were taking that risk, knowing it's a risk. And all of a sudden, the power supplier decided they're just going to go overboard on it, and they done, that's exactly what they've done. They sit in their control thing and flip the switches, shut everybody down, and they go, isn't this wonderful? And so what happened is our risk level went up so high that through conversation with everybody, we go, we have to do something. Now we have to protect the public, we have to protect the drivers, we have to protect the, the pedestrians. And that's why we are where we are, in my opinion. The risk now outweighs what, the benefits of them having no power. And so that's why we're here, and that's why we're going to spend nearly a million dollars bringing our, our lights up to a safety standard that's acceptable for our residents. And I think that's what we're here for, and that's what we're supposed to do. And thank you very much for your good report, very understandable, and made, even showed us where the money was going to come from. I mean, you can't get any better than that, unless we get the money from Edison down the road. Then you're going to get a real wrong.
Mayor, may I, may I make one comment? I just want to, I, I, I think it sounds like we are all very much in favor of this process, and I just, I wanted to say initially, as I read the report, I, I looked at very carefully, the cost, it is true, that the battery option is the most expensive of the options that were given to us, at least initially. But what I recognize is that it is an immediate solution when the power goes out. If it goes out at 3:00 AM in the morning, you immediately have security and safety for our citizens, and that's certainly worth paying more for. In fact, in 1994, I lived near the epicenter of the Northridge earthquake, and a week later, I attended the funeral of a friend's father who, after the earthquake, was racing in his car down to check on his daughter, and went through a dark intersection, was blind, blindsided and killed instantly. And so it's a reality that when those lights go dark, and, and we don't know whether it's a natural disaster such an earthquake, or whether it is man-made caused by SCE. It is really a problem, and so I commend this step that's being taken, and, and I do think it is certainly worthwhile paying the additional so that we can have the battery backup to keep our citizens safe. So I just wanted to go on the record with that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody ready for a motion?
Mayor, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. Just really quick.
Okay.
And the, the motion states that there will be traffic signal battery backup systems at various intersections throughout the city. Will, will, how do we determine which intersections those will be at? Was that determined by the amount of traffic there, or?
You know, I can't answer that. Maybe we can ask staff to answer that. I looked at the list in the staff report of the intersections, and.
I can take that.
So my take on it was, is that staff is the experts on it, and they have the numbers and so.
I just want to know how it was determined, because residents asked me, so I, I'm asking on behalf of the residents.
Yeah, obviously, subject to change by the time we, we do the install, but the list on page eight and nine was developed based upon the, the likelihood of a, of a circuit going down during a PSBS event, based upon the history that we've seen over the last two years.
It also appeared to look like it was based on which were the most, the major intersections that were, the traffic flow itself seemed to be a contributor.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm asking because I'm on the east, I'm in the, one of the top three circuits, so, and I didn't see anything for Kuenner, so I was just wondering if this was, if it was based on how often there are PSBS events, or if it was based on the amount of traffic, or that, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Econolite for the installation of traffic signal battery backup systems at various intersections throughout the city. Authorize staff to initiate a bid for the acquisition and installation of generators at the library, senior center, and city hall, and authorize the appropriation of funds and interfund transfer from the December 2017 financing to fund the acquisition and installation of generators and battery backup systems at city traffic signals.
Second?
Motion and second, and call for the vote.
Vote yes for me, please.
Vote yes for me, please.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9A, City Council Member Reports.
Okay, we'll change the order just for the heck of it. Councilmember Judge, your reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, February 3rd, I attended or listened to the Ventura County briefing on COVID-19 pandemic. Not a whole lot of new stuff there. I'm happy that our restaurants are open for outdoor dining. On Thursday, February 4th, I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee and SCAG Regional Council. Not too much to report about that from the Simi Valley. On Friday, February 5th, I attended the Ventura County Transportation Committee meeting. I did share with all the council members the Caltrans reports for our area, our whole county, and you can see on those reports, there's not too much going on in Simi Valley as far as freeways. I think they are doing some upgrades to the guardrails, and that's about it. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lou Evinus.
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, January 27th, I also attended the COVID elected officials meeting. Just a reminder that, you know, we have had, you know, almost 500 people die from COVID here in Ventura County, so just be cognizant, make sure you follow the health directives, wear masks, socially distance, please do not congregate with people that are outside of your household. And on Monday, oh, on Tuesday, I attended Tuesday, sorry, January 26th, I attended the CPUC hearing on the PSBS events, and I demanded, again, access to where SCE has actually hardened the grid, because it's ridiculous that we don't have that information. I will be asking on 9B for our attorney, our city attorney, to ask, to, to demand the information, which we're entitled to, whether through a lawsuit or whether a FOIA request, where they, where SCE has actually hardened the grid in Simi Valley. The same three circuits are the ones that are always shut down first, and they are the last ones that are turned back on. So that means that either they have not hardened the grid as they say they have, or they have hardened the grid, but they don't, it's not reliable. So something is going on, but we have residents that are impacted by this that have lost business, business income and revenue, and school days, and schools have been shut down, and residents are concerned about this. So I'm going to continue to demand that we get a map of where SCE has actually hardened their grid, as they have been given millions of dollars of funding to do, billions of dollars of funding to do. And, and thank you for all the residents who came and spoke. I know some of you waited four hours to speak, and I really appreciate that you came out. And Mayor, you also made a statement, thank you for speaking on behalf of our residents, and all those of you who waited four hours to speak, thank you for speaking out about that. And we're going to continue to fight for our residents, to make sure we have electricity. On Monday, February 1st, I attended, it was during my lunch break, my half-hour lunch break, managed to attend the Simi Valley Therapeutic Massage Grand Opening with the Chamber of Commerce. Glad to see another, another business opening in our city, and grateful that you chose Simi Valley to conduct your business. On Tuesday, February 2nd, I attended the youth council meeting, and there were a number of speakers. We had Gabe from the Ventura County Education, and Vicky from Ventura County Public Health, and Shannon from Simi Valley Unified School District, that all spoke to help the youth council in their desire to create an anti-vaping ordinance, and also messaging for anti-vaping in the city. So I look forward to see what youth council does with that. We also had them, youth council also talked about concern with tutoring help, the Centers of High School tutoring program, which is still available to Centers of High School The Centers of High School tutoring program, which is still available to Centers of High School students. They talked about their concerns with racial issues. They also expressed their concern about our homeless residents. I invited them to the homelessness task force meeting, which is happening this week, on the 11th. And they also talked about stress associated with the college application process. They're going to do recording on Sunday and having a discussion about the stress associated with the college application process. And then they're going to release it via podcast so that you can listen to it at any time, which I think is wonderful. And they also talked about limited mental health awareness in schools and proposed increasing awareness of resources and highlighting them via social media. They also discussed the youth council summit, whether or not to have it online or not, whether they're going to record it, and I think they are going to record it and do a podcast so that people can access it at any time. So they're going to have like a youth council summit slash town hall mashup. And then let the public decide what topics to discuss. I'm really excited about that. They also discussed plans for the talent show series and multicultural festival day. And I was always, I'm always very grateful to our youth council and all the work that they do. They're amazing. And Councilwoman Lister was there as well to offer suggestions and support to our youth council. So kudos to our Simi Valley Youth Council for all of their hard work. On Wednesday, February 3rd, again, attended the COVID meeting for electeds. And then on Thursday, February 4th, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting. We are now the fifth largest energy provider in the state of California. We filled a vacancy on the community advisory committee. We amended our reserve policy to include fiscal stabilization funds in the reserves definition. We looked at the shortlist for long-term contracts in order to consider which companies we're going to do business with to get renewable energy. And the purpose for that is to ensure that the service to CPA customers is affordable, to get fixed rates for power with better value, and to make sure that also that it's services reliable. And last but definitely not least, to make sure that we meet the California clean energy targets, which are going to be required by all energy providers. And that is my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, January 26th, I too attended the CPUC broadcast regarding the PSPS events. It was quite an interesting meeting. I wanted to commend the mayor for being one of the first, well, one of the five or six officials that were featured at the beginning that basically set the tone for the concerns of the community. And thank you for your remarks and your leadership there. And thank you for all that participated. It truly was a four and a half hour event of concern and frustration. And I hopefully the message was received. Later in that evening, I attended the Chamber of Commerce's Meet the Elected Official Mixer. And it was, I appreciate their efforts in connecting members of the community and the businesses with council, with elected officials. And that was a very enjoyable evening. On Wednesday, January 27th, and the following Wednesday, February 3rd, I attended the, the multi-agency task force on business recovery and appreciate their efforts in advocating for businesses who have been so adversely affected by COVID. And of course, also listened to the elected official weekly briefing calls, which now seem to be centering on explaining the difficulties with vaccination and how it's being distributed or not, and how the county is asking for more, asking for much more vaccinations than they are receiving, but how they're doing their best to make sure once it's received, it is immediately distributed and utilized. On Friday, January 29th, I had the opportunity to sit down and visit with Michelle Walden, who's the general, the new general manager of Simi Town Center. I appreciate that interaction. She certainly is enthusiastic and has great ideas to, to develop and improve our Simi Town Center. I wanted to thank her that she made sure Christmas was not canceled there. That she, although she was brand new to the job, she stepped up and made sure that there was reason and ability to celebrate the season. And so thank you to her. On Monday, February 1st, I too attended the ribbon cutting and hats off to a, to a business that is, that is opening and starting during this difficult pandemic time. On February 2nd, I too attended the youth council meeting, which I think Councilmember Luvinos outlined very well. And again, commend the youth for all they're doing. On Thursday, February 4th, I attended the Energy and Environment Committee of SCAG. And a couple of things I wanted to mention that was in that meeting. One of the things that is being developed is a, a Southern California Regional Green Print, not to be confused with a blueprint, but they're calling it a green print. This is an app that is being developed with the goal that it'll be available to anyone. It's being partnered with the Nature Conservancy to develop this tool, which should be available the fall of 2021. But basically, it will show, it will help achieve understanding of where our open spaces are situated, where, how we can, where conservation is taking place, et cetera. Basically, where areas are being targeted to, to continue to meet our ideals of open space and natural habitat, et cetera. Also in that conversation was, or in that meeting, we had a presentation by Los Angeles County's Food Waste Recycling. I understand we have a, a program that's being developed in Ventura County, which I commend. It was very interesting to basically take a virtual tour of the Los Angeles County facility. And I could see great potential benefit for generation of, of, of different energy sources, et cetera. And so there, there is, if anyone wants to take that virtual tour as well. What's so lovely is you don't have to do it in person because I understand it's very pungent. Let me put it that way. But it can, there, they have an offering on February 18th and February 20th, where they're giving those virtual tours. On this past Saturday, actually, I took a hike with the youth of, of the young women of my, of my church congregation with our masks outside. I just want to say, we have a beautiful community. And I wanted to thank the mayor for advocating that we, people be more, made more aware of the outdoor trails and resources that is offered. We truly have, have some wonderful natural resources in our community. And that kind of leads to my neck, my, one of my final comments is that I'm most appreciative that we received the official press release from Ventura County that we can now worship again inside at 25% capacity, but that finally we are able to return. And so I think what a lovely Valentine's Day that will be next Sunday. Happy Valentine's Day. People here in Simi Valley may return to their worshiping indoors in a safe, secure manner. Of course, with, with safety precautions, masking, distancing, et cetera, 25% capacity. But I appreciate that, that, that we now have that opportunity to worship together and say thank you for our many blessings and during this very difficult time. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to Councilmember Lister's comments about the, the waste, EJ Harrison is doing it with the city of Oxnard. So I'm interested to see how that's going to work out also. So when I saw your flyer, I was like, oh, yeah. You know more about that?
I would just say we're working with waste management on our end, too. Our solid waste folks in Public Works are, are busy with waste management on that.
Any, any progress in those areas is a, is a positive for everybody. So on Tuesday, January 26th, I also attended the CPUC broadcast regarding the PSPS events. I do want to compliment our mayor. Mayor Mashburn did a fantastic job speaking on behalf of the city. And he, he was articulate, he was detailed. In fact, the chairperson of the CPUC complimented the letter that Simi Valley and the mayor sent him, sent them, excuse me, it was a lady, with the details, and they utilized a lot of the information we sent them to ask questions of Southern California Edison. So it was very complimentary. So city staff and the mayor, you guys did a great job on that. Congressman Garcia also spoke very well for us, as well as Assemblymember Valderas. So we have people supporting us also at, at the chain. So hopefully, something will happen. I doubt it, but not from, the recent letter we got from SCE recently today was just a bunch of same old, same old. So I'm not counting on anything going there. Also, after that meeting, we did have the Chamber Mixer meet the elected officials. And Councilmember Lister was there and Councilmember Judge was there. It was actually very nice. They did a slow introduction of all of, or, excuse me, a first introduction of everybody, and then they put us into rooms. So we, we went to each room and got to visit with everybody that was on the call. It was very interesting. The, the participants got to ask us questions and/or just meet us. And so it was very nice. I had the pleasure of speaking with Adam from Mad Era. So I told him, you know, we're eagerly waiting that. So the whole community, I think, is, so good luck to, to them. On Wednesday, January 27th, I attended the elected officials' call along with the majority of us. And on Monday, February 1st, I also attended the ribbon cutting for the chamber. The mayor was, I was representing the city council on behalf of the mayor, showed them our certificate for her. The young lady's name is Crystal, and she opened up Simi Valley Therapeutic Massage. She's located on Galt Street, which her fame is going to be, she's across the street from Baskin Robbins. So that's the easiest way just to, to see it. My, I spoke to the landlord of that property, and he said it took her a while, a couple of months to get everything okayed and permits and things done. Especially with COVID, you know, everything going on. He said she was just so excited and so determined to open. And so best of luck to her. And I think we're all going to need to call and get a massage. So good luck, Crystal. We're counting on you to be a new business person here in town. On Tuesday, February 2nd, Councilmember Judge and I conducted neighborhood council interviews for two and four. What a great group of people. I think we had a little more than double what we needed. I think we were, we got to select nine, and I think we had like 21 people that we interviewed. Great, great to meet all these people. It was all on Zoom. And we really had a great group. We tried to focus and bring in some new people that had never done it before. So I think we did a great job on, on selecting people that want to be involved in the community. Wednesday, February 3rd, we also had our weekly call. And then I had the EDC Executive Board meeting. So that will be, I'll report more on that when we have a regular board meeting because there's a couple of things we discussed that we didn't want to bring out until the whole board knows about it. But there are some exciting things happening with the EDC. They continue to focus on trying to help businesses with COVID with all the services that they offer. They're also going to be handling additional grants, it looks like. Count, or County Supervisor Kelly Long mentioned that I think 20 million was approved in, in additional grants. So the EDC and the foundation, and the community foundation will be handling that together. The business, yeah, business grants, sorry. So, so that's a big positive for our, both our businesses and the businesses in the community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, myself, I'm not being such good order because I left my calendar in my office. But I wrote down everything, and if my memory served me right, I'll hit it all. I had a RDP, Regional Defense Partnership, meeting. We actually had two meetings. We had a general membership meeting and then a board meeting. At the board meeting, the, the point of interest is that it was decided to start paying the executive director. And it's not a full-time job, but it's, it's at least a third of a full-time job. And so it was determined that it's a massive amount of work that Gene Fisher does. And with that pay, we get to keep him as the executive director for at least one, maybe two more years, which is a huge positive. And I think it was a good move because it's, it, it'll be a good succession process because we were looking at having to fill with another individual of which there was no volunteers. I toured the Oakmont Assisted Care Facility that's on Royal Avenue. And a beautiful facility, extremely nice people. And the only message I have there is that they may not be opening till June. And the sole reason is, is because of COVID, they don't want to have to isolate their new residents right off the bat. And so they felt, felt it'd be better to hold off on opening until they could generally open and have everybody be able to mingle and, and meet each other. So I thought that was quite nice. I will leave invitations with Sue for everyone. They're, they're having an open house, but of course, it needs to be only so many people. So you do need reservations. I toured the Free Clinic, and my message there is contact the Free Clinic and take a tour if you haven't. All council members, really, all residents, the place is extremely nice. It's something to be very, very proud of. They're doing a great job. So I encourage all council members to make arrangements and go take a tour of the Free Clinic. I met with the chamber president, Jill Haney. And we had a good discussion about the relationship between the city and the chamber and any future ideas, just sharing information in general on the direction we want to go and how we want to communicate with each other. I also had a meeting with Michelle Walden, the sales manager, I think is her title, up at the Town Center Mall, and very positive there and just getting ideas for future events that'll be taking place at the mall. I, I think we all got the letter from SCE with all the wonderful things they're doing to upgrade their equipment with no details. I appreciate the questions that Councilmember Lou Evinos was asking about very specific where they're actually doing this work, which I think is a, a great question. And I, I think that's one that we have to give to them and get them to come forward with. Because when you look at a map and see how huge their area is, just to say they're doing something, I, I'm sorry, but I'm a little prejudiced. I want to know what are they doing for Simi Valley? What are they doing to reduce the number of PSPSs? What are they doing to harden their systems that affect Simi Valley? So those are very good questions, and we'll move forward with those also as a team. And I too want to say thank you to staff. Yeah, we, we wrote a, a, a letter to the CUPC. And it was well-received. But I had a lot of help putting that letter together. And staff has spent an enormous amount of time dealing with SCE. And it's, it's much appreciated. Met with Dan Jaeger. He's the new executive director of the Samaritan Center. Myself and the city manager. We had a Zoom meeting with Dan and just kind of meet and greet, almost you'd say, to get a feel and open the doors and let him know what we're up to and him letting us know what he's up to and the changes he'd like to see and what he needs help with from our city. So it was a real good starting point, first meeting. And with that, I'll close with, if you're able, our restaurants are open outside. Go out to eat, help our locals, support your monpa business. They need the help. They've been through a, a very difficult year. So help them in any way you're able to. And with that, that's it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to 9B. And that's a request for future city council agenda items or reports from staff as needed. So we'll start with...
Yeah, I have...
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Let's start with Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The, the lag on the, on the audio is a little bit slow. I'm so sorry. I requesting, I have two requests. One for an update on the lawsuit for Centers of Field Lab for the possibility of a lawsuit or legal action against, for the cleanup of the Centers of Field Lab. And the second request is for... And the second request is for the, the FOIA request for the, the list of, or the, the map or the list of locations where SCE has actually hardened their grid. I'm not sure if that's something we need to do through our attorneys or lawsuit. I'm not, I'm not sure what the process is, but I, those are my two requests for 9B.
Yeah, we, we will, we have asked for that list, and we'll continue to ask for it. And I think we'll work with the city attorney's office to move, move that forward.
Okay, and the update on Santa Fe Field Lab, are we going to get an update? That, that's a previous request already made.
Yes, that was a previous request of council, and we've been working on it with my office. And on two, two aspects. One is understanding the current litigation so the council can be briefed on it. And then finally, is there any option for the council whatsoever as far as getting involved, if you want to do that? And I'm still working on that, and I should get that shortly to you. But it's, it's been a little delayed on that one, sort of complex, get your hands around it. So I will continue with that effort.
And you might add, I'm sorry, to that discussion, as I understand that Representative Mike Garcia is now in a position, at least he, in some call that I was on, that he has some influence in that area. It might be, to that report, it might be nice to understand what is being done at the federal level through his office as well. I don't know.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that, for that tip on that, because we'll, we'll look at that, too. I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have something I would like to, to talk about.
Okay. Go right. Okay, where we, where are we? Ruth was done with her.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Are you done, Ruth?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Those were my two requests.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
On item, item 9A, or 9B, on item 9A, we tend to spend a lot of time. And I, I kind of actually went back and looked, and we go anywhere from 10 minutes to 43 minutes going over our reports. And staff has to stay here. And then staff also has to translate all that into documentation for public records. So I, I would like to look at either minimizing the length of time that we give our reports and only include our committees, or that we do some type of a written report that we can give to staff to add to the records. I just think it might be a little bit more beneficial. It would be a time saver. It would save staff time. And, and it would, and a lot of times, our meetings are so late, nobody's out there watching us anyway. So this way, it might be something that they can, they can get easier in, in written form. So it's just something I wanted to, to discuss.
Okay. Do you think we should make that an agenda item where we can discuss it and come up with a sort of a protocol? Or do you want staff to come back with, with their suggestion to us?
I, I think the other council members might want to jump in on that. I don't know.
Well, what we can do is at least put it on the agenda to have that discussion, and the council can take it whatever direction they want.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's a, a good idea that we all discuss it and come up. It, it is a cost factor, and that's, historically, it used to be at the front of the meeting. It, Mayor Huber moved it to the rear of the meeting because there were folks here with consultants and, you know, paid folks. And they would sit here, and typically, it would run close to an hour. And that was another hour that they were having to pay for consulting services. And so, that's why Mayor Huber moved it to the rear of the meeting. And now, we're, we're taking that hour.
I, I know we all have things that we want to share. And so, I'm just trying to make it, think of a better way to do it, make it more economical time-wise.
Maybe you put a timer on us.
Well, I know, we do have 13 people that are still watching via YouTube. So, you know, obviously, our residents think it's important to hear about our calendars. Otherwise, we wouldn't have 13 people still watching YouTube, watching the city council meeting. And that's just the ones on YouTube. I can't say how many others are on the other channels, but I think our residents want to know.
Well, we have 127,000 people. So if we only have 13, we're, we're not doing a real good job of getting out there. I'm just thinking it might be beneficial in a written form. So, but we can all discuss that.
Or a, or a time limit.
Yeah, a time limit or a written form to make it easier for staff and, and save time.
Well, even if it's 13 residents, I think it's important to them. I think it's important to those 13 residents.
And it is probably appropriate now to agendize it, then.
Okay, let's agendize. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we're ready to adjourn. I gotta find my notes. Hopefully, someone will know a little more information on this young man than I do. And please speak up if you do. But we're going to adjourn tonight, first in memory of Brayden Wilson. And do you, do you know?
I, I know Brayden's mom from Rotary.
Can you give us a brief?
He is a, he was a 15-year-old young man, only child, very well-loved. And everything that his mom says about him and his friends and family say about him, he was just a gentle, loving young man. His mom is writing beautiful poetry in, in memory of him, and it just, it breaks your heart. And he actually died of COVID-related symptoms at Children's Hospital. My, my neighbor's a, a nurse there, and I, you know, she can't tell me anything, but I, I mentioned, I said, oh, I understand, we, we lost one of our own there. And she goes, I know, it's just so sad. But he's a beautiful young man, and, and his mom's name is Amanda. And I, I know Amanda, just like any mother, just loved her, her child, you know, with all her heart. So it's been rough on her. She has some support, and she's doing real, real well, and her, her poems are just very beautiful.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can say a few words, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Brayden Wilson was a 15-year-old who died from COVID. His mother assured that he took all the precautions, wore a mask, socially distanced, did all the right things. And he is one of 664 people in Ventura County that have died due to COVID. He attended Santa Fe High School, was a bright, inspirational, kind, generous soul. He was in my daughter's class at Santa Fe High School. Both my children attend Santa Fe High School. And my, my heart and thoughts go out to his family, but also the entire Santa Fe High School community, which was completely devastated by losing one of their students to COVID-19. And just a reminder from his mother, I know, to make sure that we all take care of each other, that we wear masks, that we socially distance, that we make sure that we take this, this pandemic seriously and take care of each other in our community because we don't know who has, who, who is more susceptible to this disease. So I just want to let, you know, Brayden's family know how sorry I am. I expressed it on social media, but express it personally, and I'm so glad that we did this certificate for him. And thank you for adjourning in his honor, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And also tonight, I learned this morning that retired fire captain Lloyd Woody Wood, Lloyd Wood, passed away this morning on the golf course in Oxnard. And so, I, I, he, he worked mainly in the Thousand Oaks area, but you know, the, the time he served is when you worked everywhere. And I guarantee you, he's been in this valley fighting fires hundreds of times. And at any rate, he passed away this morning, and very unfortunate, he was a great guy, a super guy to be around at the, at the fire stations and at big fires, and he will be missed. And with that, we are adjourned.